Here that I now declare this meeting open. And I'm gonna ask Counselor Jim Looney if he will ask what's an implication.
Father, thank you for the blessings of the day. Realizing that things aren't perfect in this world right now. It has looked some tough times on a lot of people. Give them the courage and wisdom to make their way through this. Give us the wisdom and the courage to do things to help our community do well in these times. In God's name we pray, amen.
Amen. And I'm gonna ask our counsel person, Anne Snaby, if she would. Please, it's in our pleasure to lead this, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
So you do have the agenda. The packets have been delivered. And at this time, we entertain a motion that we approve the agenda as.
I make a motion that adopt the agenda. Second.
Have a motion in the second.
Here, we may need to do an amendment to the agenda in that everyone's probably aware that Mrs. Clerk, Emily Ragland, lost her father and his kids. And so she is not present. And depending on that family situation, may not be present this week. And so we may need to either adopt the agenda and then amend it with a motion to appoint Brandon as interim clerk during the absence of Ms. Ragland. In that, we'll have some documents that we need the clerk to sign for the bond validation. If she's not available, then we need to use Brandon.
Do we need to adopt the agenda first and then make him the interim clerk? Or vice versa?
Do it either way.
I think, I think we can do that. Anne, if you would, just restate the motion as adopting our agenda and approving, appointing Brandon Douglas as interim clerk until further notice.
Okay. I make a motion that we adopt the agenda and appoint Brandon Douglas as interim clerk until further notice.
And we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on that? Is that satisfactory for Mr. Parliamentarian David Siphon?
That should work fine, Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Motion and second discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carries. Counsel, I would entertain a motion that we approve our amended minutes of June the 25th, 2020 work session, special call meeting, and our July 13th, 2020 regular council meeting.
I make a motion, a motion that we approve the minutes from June 25th and July 13th.
Have a motion to those two periods? All in favor? Wait, do I have a second? Second. Have John second, all in favor? Please say aye.
Aye.
And the motion carries. Thank you. Counsel, we had a retiring member of our Jasper Police Department this week that, that I think that it would be entirely appropriate for us to recognize at this meeting. And that is Jim Bliston. Jim started his employment July the 1st of 1995, where he served with the City of Jasper for over 25 years. Prior to his employment with the City of Jasper, Jim was a county sheriff's deputy. He was also employed there from 1990 to 1995. Before working at the county sheriff's office, Jim served his country serving in the United States Navy for three years, go Navy. During deployment with the City of Jasper, he has worked as a patrolman, a sergeant in investigative, a captain. And he is retired, holding the rank of major and assistant chief. Counsel, let's give Jim a great big round of applause that he can hopefully see on this, on this. Although we did go wish him well, we want to do so officially.
Very nice time, Thursday.
Very nice. Okay, item 7, old business. Final consideration and approval of ordinance number 2024. Request to rezone in ordinance number 2020-21 for annexation parcel number JA17012. A 17011 at 274 and 250, Robin Road to C2 into the City of Jasper. Brandon, if you will bring this to us.
Mr. Mayor, counsel, and for the public, you may recall last month, we approved to move forward with this particular item in the introduction or the first reading. Final consideration or second reading. These are properties owned, and they're currently in the unincorporated part of King's County. At math illustrates, there are two parcels. One is county highway business and the other parcel, county rural residential. It is the desire of the applicant to utilize this as an equipment store in the immediate with a possible future shop to allow to sewer. In the event if this were to be approved, we do have conditions specifically to string the property since he would like to combine the parcels because we do not allow a split zone. It would come in under the C2, which is the equivalent compatible land use of surrounding properties in the county and in the city, in so much as the highway business. So with that, you did approve to move this forward. So this is the final consideration or second reading.
Make a motion, we approve this as second reading?
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve the second reading of the request. And do we have any further discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. And the motion is granted. Now, we come to the public hearing section of our meeting tonight. And counsel, we, public hearing is a request to close and abandon a portion of the rights of Old Mullins Road as it is contained within parcel number 031003002. And Brandon, if you will, bring this to us.
Mr. Mayor, counsel, and Mr. Siphon's helped me along the way. So I didn't blame, as I didn't want to exhaust him tonight with all the other items. But nonetheless, if y'all have any questions, he has been involved in helping me this. You all may recall that sometime back, there was a request to rezone a portion of property that had been lot split from a much larger parcel of land that runs Highway 515. There are 60-plus acres of land was rezoned to a residential zoning to allow for minimum lots of five acres, not exceeding 12, 10 or 12 lots. At the applicant or at the, or now the owner, was finishing due diligence to begin doing the lot splits within the 60-plus acres. It was revealed that this particular section of their property identified as old rights of way. But being in the city, they do have to request a public hearing to abandon said rights of way and to ask for formal closing and subsequent consideration of any sorts of quick claim of that rights of way. As you will see from the illustration aerial, in essence, this particular road, the Old Mullins Road terminates, it is a county, terminates at the Chicken Coops. And since there are nothing more than just some trails and large oaks and other trees and vegetation, so there's really no semblance of a road bed. The city has no interest, or the town has no interest in any sort of road. We have advertised this public hearing. The adjoining property owner, this person and this have both indicated that they have no issues. This parcel has access to all 515. This person has access through Thompson Road. We are not landlocked in any parcel. So this is just a public hearing to solicit any sorts of input the public may have. And with that, I'll just step up.
So do we have anyone in our audience that wishes to speak towards this? Do we have anyone waiting, Brandon, to speak?
I do not see anyone virtually raising their hand or anyone in the waiting room.
Then we can clear the public hearing, close and move to our next, next item if there's no one to speak for it.
Yeah, I make a motion, we close the public hearing?
Second.
So we have a request to close, a motion and a second. To close and abandon a portion of Old Mullins Road? Is there any discussion among counsel? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, same. And the motion carries.
Now that was a motion to close the meeting. Now we got to vote on the.
Under new business.
On new business, yes.
So under new business, item A is the consideration of this closing, abandoning and quitclaiming a portion of the rights of Old Mullins Road as is contained within parcel number 03103002 to the abutting property owners in accordance with Resolution Number 2020-06. And Brandon, if you will, go with that.
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, counsel, and for the public, as the aforementioned public hearing indicated, this particular request is in essence just allowing the formal closing and abandoning of rights to this particular rights of way. And then subsequently, the way you do that is adjoining property owners then petition the city for incorporating that to their deed. Because this is one parcel, it would alter to just that one particular entity. With that, once again, there's no objections from either party. And merely attach quitclaim deed to the rule of record and move to their due diligence and subsequent abutting lots.
Counsel, I entertain a motion to approve.
I make a motion. I make a motion that we approve closing the Old Mullins Road according to the resolution number 2020-06.
Second. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. And the motion carries. Under item B, consideration and approval of Resolution Number 2020-07, City of Jasper to execute an intergovernmental installment sales agreement with the Jasper Downtown Development Authority along with the other necessary documents for the refunding of existing debt, including but not limited to bond resolution agreement and financing agreement and for the mayor to execute said documents and an approval of signature. We'll ask Mr. Siphon if he will bring this to us to start with.
Thank you, Mayor. I know that everybody drives the research, it's going to be a great. But you'll recall at the last meeting that, that the city manager had implemented the regulations in that interest rates currently are extremely low. And so this was an opportunity to refinance our current debt with the water and sewer enterprise fund and get a lower interest rate. And we were able to achieve that. We had gotten a bid from J.P. Morgan for an interest rate at 1.14%. And at that interest rate, the city would save about $383,000 in interest charges. And the way we have set this up, the city will end up with about $600,000, a little more than $600,000 that the city can put in a capital fund. It is for much needed water projects. Example is the refurbishment of a couple of the water tanks necessary to the system, upgrades, improvements, various water lines. And the great thing about this is that the 1.14% interest rate and the principal and interest payments that we'll be paying until 2032 are almost exactly what we had before with the higher interest rate. So we were able to save money. We were able to build up our capital fund to do capital improvements in the water system. We did all this without changing the amount of flexible and interest that we pay in substantial form. So this is a great initiative, a great initiative that the city manager to see if we could do this. So part of which you have is force the resolution to approve the intergovernmental installment sale agreement and the related bond documents that are necessary in order to achieve this fund. And we're going to do this by way of the installment sale agreement with the Downtown Development Authority. The Downtown Development Authority is in effect going to be the issuing authority for the bonds. And in its consideration for them issuing the bonds, we're going to put title to certain water assets into the Water Authority. I'm sorry, into the Downtown Development Authority. And then by the installment contract, the intergovernmental installment sale agreement, we in effect buy those assets back by making the payments on the bonds. So I know, I think this is complicated, and it is complicated because there are a lot of restrictions on the ability of the municipality to borrow money to get these documents in order to legally be able to have the common issuance and illegally be able to issue bond in this fashion and buy both the city and the downtown authority. One thing that you probably do need to be clear, now this is a revenue bond issued by the Downtown Development Authority. And so the water and sewer revenues are pledged to pay back that bond. So as a part of the issuance of the bond itself, it's considered a revenue bond. But under the installment sales agreement, if at any point in the next 12 years that there are insufficient water and sewer revenues to make those bond payments, then under that installment sale agreement, the city council in has agreed that in the unlikely event that the water and sewer revenues aren't sufficient to pay back the bond, that the city will impose a millage rate increase in order to pay the bonds and be sure that the bondholder gets paid. So I wanted y'all to be clear on that. It's anticipated that, you know, that that would never happen, that you would never have to have a millage height to pay the bonds. But it's part of the legal terms within that installment sales agreement. So in theory, you know, it could happen. The good thing about that though is you in effect are giving the bondholder sort of a double security that the bondholder knows that the water and sewer revenues are pledged to pay back that bond. And, and you know, that makes the, the bondholder comfortable. And then he sort of, he or she has a double comfort to know that a millage, the possibility of a millage assessment is there if it's needed. And what that does for us, since we've sort of given them that double protection, they are agreeable to giving you a very, very good interest rate at 1.14%, which, you know, is pretty amazing to me. I don't know that I've ever seen a 1.14% loan. A lot of that credit goes to Tom Owens, who shot the bond and got us great competition for the bond. And that let us get a great interest rate for the bond. So what we need you to do tonight is just approve the resolution that approves the installment sales agreement and the related documents and authorizes the mayor and then Brandon as interim clerk to sign the resolution and related documents on behalf of the city. And so we need a motion for that approval. But before you get there, I now I hit you with a lot of information quickly. I wanted to see if anybody had any questions. And I'll be glad to try to answer any questions that anybody has.
I think, David, just from my point of view, I want to echo what you said. Our city manager's done a phenomenal job making sure that this has come into play, answered all of my questions, and I'm pretty clear on everything.
Well, if nobody has any questions, then we just need a motion to approve Resolution 2020-07 for the bond risk.
I make a motion that we approve the Resolution Number 2020-07 for the City of Jasper to execute an intergovernmental installment sale agreement with the Jasper Downtown Development Authority.
Second, I second that motion. Any related documents?
Yes, and any related documents.
Thank you. We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
And any discussion or further questions for Brandon or for David?
Once again, thank you both. Y'all did a great job.
Yeah, congratulations to the whole team and that this was truly a, a team effort.
Good to you as well, Tom.
Okay, motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Under item C, consideration approval of establishing depository accounts for the necessary bond refunding and to mirror the signature cards with that of our existing accounts. So Brandon, do you want to bring this to us?
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, counsel, we could in essence assert that the aforementioned item gave us latitude to create. But for record keeping and tracking, what we could specifically do was make sure the minutes reflect that you all are establishing an account. Staff's recommendation is the United Community Bank in so much as our existing water accounts are positioned there. So we can go ahead and create a separate depository account to separate the funds that we would be receiving from the bond proceeds. We do have a obligatory 36 months to expend any of those monies. So this would allow us the ability to track them. And then at the conclusion, we can then close that account. And all the while, we can just have a record keeping of it.
Counsel, I would entertain a motion at this time that we've consideration approval of establishing these depository accounts.
Aye.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion, counsel? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, same. And the motion carries. Under item D, consideration approval of Resolution Number 2020-08 for the City of Jasper to accept the coronavirus relief fund grant agreement as provided through the CARES Act and for the mayor to execute any and all documents relating thereof for the reimbursements relating to COVID-19. Brandon, if you will, bring this to us, please, sir.
And Mr. Mayor and counsel, as is the case on meeting days, what we try to do is get you all, all the information as quickly as possible. When this packet went out, this particular resolution, all the background sheet was included. You may not have seen this. It was a generated staff resolution to just in essence ratify that we are accepting the CARES money, or the donor fund as identified by the state. Subsequently, mid-afternoon, the Georgia Municipal Association has sent out a model ordinance, or excuse me, model resolution. And I think that Mr. Siphon could clarify that either one perhaps achieve what the CRF grant agreement asked for, which is just something from the governing body accepting the terms and conditions. And, but my preference is always to try to align ourselves and for consistency with that of other municipalities. So most places will most likely gravitate towards the model resolution. Mr. Siphon, if you want to comment on either one you're comfortable with?
Well, uh, I agree, Brandon, that, you know, for regular, normal people, the resolution you drafted would be fine, but the CARES money is federal money, and with that federal money comes federal bureaucracy. And so I think just not to run into any hiccup in clarifying, uh, for that CARES reimbursement, um, I'm in agreement with you that although I think what you did was perfectly fine, uh, let's give the bureaucrats what they want and then do this more extensive, uh, resolution.
I agree.
And this one is obviously mine, believe it or not, I can be brief. Uh, and this is the, uh, model resolution, uh, which we would essentially assign at the, uh, same number, uh, so for record keeping, it would reflect the number.
So Council, I'd entertain a motion to approve the model resolution as presented.
Make a motion to approve the model resolution as presented.
Second. In a second. Any further discussion?
Brandon, please tell Cupcake hello for us.
Yeah. Well, he didn't mute that quickly. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We will have the model resolution. Under item E, consideration of approval of remote workstations, which would be laptops, tablets, et cetera, in response to adhering to any orders that may arrive relative to the ongoing pandemic as reimburs- excuse me, reimbursable from the CRF grant agreement. So Brandon, if you will, please, sir, bring this to us.
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, Council, and for the public, uh, there's been a lot of discussion about, uh, CARES money and the aforementioned resolution was, uh, something that enables us to, we've already received, uh, $2,408 from the, uh, the monies, uh, that have been allocated to, uh, the cities, counties throughout the state. Um, our allocation is a 30% of the overall amount that would be allocated to us. The state, uh, deposited 30% of the $62,408 into our account, uh, for, for purchases that we have already incurred, uh, or encumbered. Uh, the reason why we are having to move this a little more rapidly is they have put a deadline of September 1st as the date that all monies have to be spent or encumbered. So we have in effect spent about $15,000 in, uh, PPE, uh, panasinatizing stations, uh, et cetera. We spent an additional 15,000 or encumbered 15,000, uh, last month when we, uh, approved the building modifications of the City Hall. Um, so that in effect is half of the money. Uh, due to the fact that the $100,000 approval of the, uh, software from Tyler was approved last month, it is our goal to seek, uh, all of that because we do need to be able to work remotely, which is something we can't do now. However, that would come in the 70% phase, which is yet to be determined if that's going to be an application process. So the additional $32,000 we need to encumber or spend, we would like to go ahead and identify some, uh, laptops so that when we have the software in place, we would be able to have teams work remotely, um, as needed. Uh, I'm not necessarily in a position to assert that we will go and spend the $10,000, $20,000 on, uh, five or 10 laptops. Uh, in speaking with Lindsay, uh, some of the monies we have already encumbered or spent, such as our server that updates our software, uh, is perhaps eligible expenses as well. I wanted to use this item as an opportunity to illustrate to you all that I think if we are going to seek the additional $200,000, which is the 70%, that after September 1st, if we have not spent or encumbered the 62, our chances of seeking the 200,000 before December 30th would be nearly zero. So I'm asking you all to be, uh, I guess, receptive to saying, yes, Brandon, go ahead and, uh, encumber, uh, 10, 20,000 worth of laptops or tablets, all the while knowing some of the existing items that we have already, uh, encumbered or received may push us past the 60,000 allocation. Uh, so anything left over, we would be seeking with the additional 70%. Uh, but I didn't want to just not take this opportunity to inform you all of exactly what I know. Uh, this ad indicated that they were going to have some training opportunities, they sent an email today saying that they are working on that. I will tell you, a lot of my cohorts and other communities are scrambling just as diligently to make sure that we're being very possessive of the money that we've received so that we can use that back into our local communities, uh, and to also make sure that as an essential service, we can still operate during these uncertain times. So, um, I think we're in a pretty good shape to encumber the remaining monies, but I just want to have a little extra, uh, feel-good that y'all know what staff's doing to be mindful of the monies we've already received, uh, and not to just sit and buy 10 laptops and let them collect dust. I'm going to get two, three, five, and some of the other encumbrances make up the difference. So that is all for me.
I think that's understood, and I make a motion we, uh, approve, uh, purchase of, or encumbrance of monies for remote, uh, workstations.
Second. Have a motion and a second to, uh, approve encumbrance of these, uh, laptops as needed for the CARES resolute. And, uh, any further discussion from Council? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, same. Moving right along, item F, consideration of ordinance number 2020 dash 22 for the amending of the City of Jasper alcohol ordinance to permit open containers within the central business district. All in favor, say, oh wait, we got to go through the real stuff, don't we?
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor.
Brandon, if you will, bring this to us, please.
Absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council, and, uh, for the public. Um, in the ever-changing world of, uh, local governments, uh, and by and large, state and federal, and just society as a whole, um, there has been the identified need of wanting to make sure that we modify our ordinances to reflect kind of the desires of local communities. And then specifically, the, um, state has taken some proactive measures to help, uh, businesses in this economic, uh, timeframe. Uh, as of today, the governor did sign, um, the, uh, new legislation whereupon restaurants and some other businesses without hall licenses can deliver alcohol to, uh, residents. Uh, so many of you have, uh, heard of downtown central business districts having, uh, in essence, an open container, which basically means you can have a, uh, a visit restaurant or to a brewery, uh, get a, a drink while you're waiting for a seat, or just kind of window shopping, or if some establishments are receptive, can kind of go in and shop around, just kind of create that vibe in downtown, uh, that it's kind of alive and thriving. Uh, we do have a proposed ordinance that, uh, City Attorney Siphon has generated. Uh, that is in, uh, legal proper order he can go into, uh, but I think by and large, what I want to illustrate during our time is this is in essence what we would be considering, at least at the staff level, and mindful that this particular, uh, introduction of the ordinance is just that, is to introduce the topic, to see, uh, the receptiveness of incorporating, uh, the city's green space along Main Street, uh, through Peace Park as we continue to address, uh, the northern end of, uh, having kind of a bookends of, uh, city public spaces with, uh, downtown. So with that, I will defer any legal to Mr. Siphon, um, but any, you know, staff driven under practical law, John back in.
Um, I would just add that the ordinance itself, uh, just would not prohibit an open container, which is defined as a clear plastic cup that one receives from, uh, either the brewery or a downtown restaurant within the containment area that, uh, Brandon outlined, which is that area in red. So, um, if people are allowed to destroy it or, uh, or doing an exhibition of public drunkenness, they still could be cited for that, they just wouldn't be able to be cited for an open container. Uh, and obviously, if they were D U R I in, uh, a vehicle, they obviously could be cited for that also. But, um, I think the concept is to try to help the downtown area, uh, become more of sort of a tourist destination and hopefully, uh, put another arrow in the river of the brewery and downtown restaurants, uh, to be profitable and hopefully, uh, bring more restaurants and more, uh, you know, maybe a second brewery, but do something to, uh, uh, help market the downtown, and then if it, if it takes off like we hope, then over time, we can modify as appropriate that open container area to allow other restaurants that may develop a street or two over, uh, to also participate. So that's the concept, but, um, sometimes alcohol is controversial, so, uh, you know, we, uh, we invite input from the Council as to any concern.
Council, what's your pleasure?
So, Mr. Mayor, Mayor and Council, if I may, looking at the map, uh, City Manager Douglas, it does appear that, you look at the area where Wall Street actually joins with Depot Street, that corner is where Olive New York Pizza is currently operating. Can we amend to include that area? I would hate to exclude that business that currently serves alcohol.
We can. Uh, I had, uh, in one iteration, I had incorporated, uh, that beat, but then I thought just for the introduction, to get the topic going, I would scale it back, uh, and kind of leave for you all to advise.
So Mayor, with that being said, um, I would like to make a motion to approve with the addition of, uh, Depot and Wall Street right there to include Olive New York Pizza.
So I've got, uh, another area that I would like to discuss, if you want to put them on the same motion?
Yes.
Uh, the, uh, continuing on Wall Street onto the Park property, uh, where the, uh, Perro properties are, is there a reason it's excluded?
Ex- I'm, I'm sorry, excluded, where?
From downtown, downtown business district.
I see what you're talking about. It's on that far right corner near the First Baptist.
Yeah.
I'm not sure what our property butts up to, but I do believe that is included.
This property?
Yeah, that property right there, I'm seeing that as a Perro property.
It should be.
And the one just, uh, to the right would be the, uh, uh, Jones property, Jones Family Property.
Yes. But I'm in that motion to include that area as well.
That area would be the city properties, property owned by the City of Jasper.
Yes.
That, in that park area, which I think would be really good, good catch.
Yes.
So any other discussion? Before we even get a second, is there any other discussion by any other Councilman? So I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve this. Uh, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, same. Motion carries. And thank you all.
I thought that would put a smile on Greens Huddle's face, but he's still frowning.
Is he still frowning?
Uh, there's a grin.
To put a smile on my face? Okay, item, uh, G, consideration of approval of the City of Jasper job application form. Uh, Councilmember Looney, would you bring this to us with Councilmember Snaby?
Yes, uh, in your package, there is a, uh, employment application for consideration. Uh, again, uh, Stella has done a wonderful job putting this together. Uh, the legal ease, I'm assuming, David, you have looked at it and, uh, comfortable with the legal ease on it?
I am fine with it as written. We can try this for a little while. Uh, I think at some point, uh, you know, on the first page, have the position slide forward. We may want to have some line that just has, you know, um, affirmative representation by the applicant that they've read the job description for the position and are able to perform the position, or that they request reasonable accommodations for the position as follows. But, you know, I would like at some point to have them make some affirmative representation that, you know, if the job involves lifting 20 pounds and, uh, operating, uh, tobacco or, you know, whatever this is required.
I hear that, and I agree with it, except, uh, the issue is we have not gotten all the job descriptions completed yet, so, uh, I'm not sure that we could include that at this time. It's just something that'll be easy to, to include later.
Yes, I agree with that.
And then could we just have them sign off on, on the requirements of the job when, if we so choose to hire them?
We can, we could have them making, uh, an affirmative, um, statement that they can perform the duties of the job and... But I think most times, they would need that or ask for it, but we need to have that on.
Right. With that, I'll make a motion that this job application be accepted by council.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to accept the application by council. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion. Item H, consideration and approval of purchasing necessary water supplies in anticipation of the upcoming Georgia Power reliability project, which will include tearing up downtown again. So, you know, there's this sign in Atlanta, wherever you go, it says, "They're tearing up Peachtree again." Well, this will be causing some issues. So I'm going to ask Brandon if he will speak to this for all of us.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor and Counsel and for the public, this particular item is vague on purpose due to the fact that many persons throughout the community have noticed some stakes in the ground along some Georgia Power lines. There is a project that Pike is subcontracting with Georgia Power in order to take some of those power lines in strategic areas and place them underground so as for the reliability of the Georgia Power system, it just used to aid their efforts in supplying reliable power. It is, I believe, a good project. It is a very intense project throughout the city of, as well as the county. I would like to state that the aforementioned resolution on the cares was probably a quarter of what I've written to you all in your memo. So I apologize for going a little diatribe, but I thought it was important, in the background, to at least put it in context that although it's a good project for our community, what we've articulated in the last week or so with Pike and utilities that we have a duty and obligation to supply reliable or in sewer to our customers as well. Due to the fact that there were some unknowns from previous administrations whereupon there were not some record keeping of where some of our lines were located subsurface and then the difficulty of trying to locate. Even if a utility calls for a locate, there is no guarantee that it will be properly marked or identified. So we need to be in a position to respond as expeditiously as possible in repairing or replacing any lines that may get, I guess, bored through or tore up. So I'm asking for a little bit of a blank check all the while, hoping you all know and trust that it is not my intent to spend any money if there is a mishap that has been concluded is the fault of the utility. Specifically, if it's marked properly and they hit it, it's their responsibility to fix it. However, water is a valuable resource, and if I'm haggling about who's going to pay for 10-inch line, I'd just as soon go ahead and have some available pipe on the yard so we can mobilize, get it here with the fittings, fix it, and then if they reimburse us later, we can haggle over that. Along with, what I would be asking for is an initial approval to spend up to $25,000 for purchasing 4-inch through 10-inch lines with all the necessary fittings and supplies fittings. Additionally, there is a method of putting in some hydro stops where they take a line, a water line, and we don't have a whole lot of valves throughout the system. So there's some places where we can't turn off. So after reviewing some of the maps of where the underground's going in, we can try to proactively, or at least in the midst of it, get a vendor out, I believe Corde main we used for to do a hydro stop where they would, in essence, hotline, a line that's got water running through it, and the way they cut through the line, they stop it, put in a valve, but that can go upwards of $5,000 per valve. So I'm asking for about $15,000 authorization to go up through that. Both of these items, a combined $40,000 would not be monies spent in vain. We do need to have a supply of water lines on the yard along with, it would help our overall system to have these. So in essence, what, you know, I talked with Lindsay and Beverly and David about is, you know, that it could, in effect, be our reliability project as well. So piggybacking off of Georgia Power. So making sure that our customers know that in concert with the utility, we want to partner, we're going to meet with them tomorrow to just go over some specific areas of concern and just appeal to them that they bear with us and be patient. So with that, I'll abstain any more comments.
Brandon, when you were mentioning the hydro stops, they would basically hot tap a line and then place a valve. Is the valve, what we've discussed before, needing throughout our system?
Yes, some of these monies are kind of already identified in the budget. I think we've allocated some monies specifically for valve project.
Yes, and that's, okay, that jogged my memory, that's what I was referring to.
But normally, the way I prefer to operate was come to y'all with more of a strategic plan outlined with timeframe, vendors, et cetera. But in the essence of time and wanting to make sure they were, if you ask, they would prefer to get started yesterday, but they are working with us and other communities to give us some time to position ourselves as best we can.
So the valve, once the hydro stop's done, the valve will be a permanent fixture in our system to assist us in the future, correct?
Correct.
Fantastic.
Also, there's some monies that we're under consideration and the next item on the agenda that I guess we could at least consider partial payment for any supplies we might need, so. Presuming we pass that.
Correct.
So any further requests or questions for Brandon at this point?
Brandon, if I remember correctly, the original project we looked at for valves in our system, the original amount and number of valves that we anticipated, we kind of scaled back on, is that correct, to what we actually adopted in our current budget?
I believe so. I think in the past, they've ambitiously wanted about $100,000 worth of valves each year. I'm just not sure if that's feasible. So I believe the monies are allocated through a line item that we would not have to do terribly much in fund balance.
Anything further? Counsel?
Obviously, I like the idea of planning for catastrophe. So it'd be much, it's a good idea to have this stuff on hand where we can use it when we need it rather than have to wait for it.
Our phones are going to ring if it happens, no matter what. I think it would behoove all of us to attempt to move as quickly as possible. So I think that's better planning, Brandon. So at this point, Counsel, I would entertain a motion to approve these expenditures for these water supply.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the expenditures up to the amount of $50,000 for this project. And Counsel, just for explanation, I know that we scaled back on the project when we were budgeting. So I believe the extra $10,000 for the valves to be well worth our cost.
So we have a motion to approve expenditures up to $50,000 for these supplies. And we're going to put the on our great segment to keep it as low as we can. And do we have a second, please?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve up to $50,000. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same. Motion carries. Item I is next, consideration approval of Georgia Power's request for the purchase of easements from the City of Jasper. And can we charge a lot of money for that since there's going to be a lot of problems that they're going to cause? I mean, I'm just asking for a friend, okay?
Well, I will tell you that in my experience, once again, in regards to easements, it's always good to work with our partners. I will say that what I try to illustrate to our residents, businesses, and partners at the county or utilities that I will forever always be community-minded and relational-oriented. As such, I do not deem it necessary or appropriate, at least for me, to try to counter the easements in terms of the monetary amount. And in your packet and for the purpose of record, there are four particular easements in which Georgia Power is seeking to purchase the rights to utilize. 55 Dixie Street, $4,000. East Spring Street, $14,800. 127 Woodland Drive, $4,000. And 1800 Cove Road, $4,000. And I will show you all, in terms of the packet of information, the exhibits to illustrate the locations for reference point. And I think it's important to know, this is the police station. So you can see that I don't foresee any sort of conflict with anything there. Additionally, this is the green space. And if you recall from the concept, this was going to be a parking area for the green space. I don't foresee any issue there. Furthermore, I apologize, this is the water plant. This is an area, I'll ask you in a moment, for a little latitude. There's some concerns because of some unknowns subsurface. And then along Cove Road, close to the intake. And working with Mr. Siphon, the easement, which albeit is pretty standard and in proper form, if you all choose to allow this, I would like for the motion to reflect that you all approve it subject to city administration working with Georgia Power on some of these locations, just to give me a little and then to illustrate to them that because of some unknowns, if we agree in concept and principle, the final location would still be subject to how costly or how damaging it could be to our system. So with that, any questions?
Mayor?
A concern that I would have would be how well these specific locations have been vetted. You made the specific comment about the treatment plant area. I certainly agree that we want to work with our partners in any way we can. But I hope there would be some sort of coordination of sorts to verify that having it here versus to feed over would be preferable for any kind of plans or infrastructure or the things that we may run across. I know how difficult that question is when you have work going on actively, but I still think it's important that we do that. As to the cost of these months, I have no idea. I mean, I just have to defer that, I mean, I like to kick some tires. We've been in some situations where there was some back and forth. But at the same time, I think the overriding thing right here is, this is very exciting, it's a huge project, and it just demonstrates that how much progress we're making and we appreciate it, so.
This does have a real value to the city. Successful completion of this project. I'd like to make a motion that we approve the request for purchase of easements and give city manager authority to negotiate costs where a increase may be necessary.
And location.
And certainly location, yes, sir.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Mayor, will you please show me, I'm going to, Mayor, will you show, I'm going to recuse from the vote? Hey, let the record, and we are recording, let the record show that John Faust will recuse this stuff. And John, for the record, please state who you work for.
I work for Georgia Power.
Thank you, sir. And that's totally unattainable, gratefully appreciated. Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, and I include myself in that vote. Any opposed, same. And the motion carries. Also, for the record, I want to say that it is a wonderful thing to work together with your partners. And this is, the scope of the work involved here is going to be quite laborious and we will get a lot of questions in our community. I personally think that we need to be about telling our story to the public at large as quickly as we can start. Item J, consideration approval of replacing and repairing of the variable frequency drive at the water treatment plant. Which I did not know that we had a variable frequency drive at the water treatment plant. So every day, we learn something. Can we ask Brandon to explain this to us?
I appreciate it, Mr. Mayor and Counsel. And because I'm just all about me and I don't want any other staff to speak, I told David not to chime in. Albeit, I hope that he did reach out to our respective co-chairs on this particular committee. I hope he did talk with y'all. Very good. So if I misspeak, please correct me. But in essence, what I asked him to do is kind of dumb it down for me, insomuch as the amount of water that we draw down, pull into the plant, we try to keep it consistent to reduce the manual pumping of water, stopping the pump, pumping of the water, stopping the pump. In effect, it can act as a hammer in the line, which can cause some leaks. Whereas if you have an automatic or a variable frequency drive that is essentially electrical component that just, it sets the pump at a steady flow rate coming into the plant. So for instance, if you know your demand's going to be 1.8 million gallons per day, you can, in effect, set it at that and it's just constantly flowing. So the cost, at the time, I didn't know exactly what it would be. I've put on here about $25,000 as a ceiling, not exceed. We did get two quotes in, Caldwell Electrical, at $14,200, as well as Pro Pumps, $10,000, nearly $1,100. I would still like to ask for not to exceed, and this is where I would re-
I would still like to ask for not to exceed, and this is where I will re, uh, refer to or defer to Mr. Faust, uh, or Dr. Proctor, in talking with David, what we need to try to avoid this is it gets so hot with the electrical components that we think what happened was it just blew the box and, uh, burned up. So what David thought was, this is being replaced, we house it in some sort of structure because it's sitting outside of the plant, and we could almost take a, um, one of those ductless Mitsubishi, um, type of air units, build a little, and feed in a controlled temperature climate, uh, for the unit server room, uh, for computers. And so because of the unknown cost associated with that, uh, I would inflate the price beyond the ten thousand, uh, fifteen thousand or not exceed twenty. Uh, once again, uh, with Lindsay on board, listening, uh, between her and David, neither one of them ever wants to spend any money. So fortunately, the controls are there that I don't have to, um, be too terribly, uh, sometimes I have to ask them to spend more when it's worth it and it's for the betterment. So, uh, Mr. Faust, Dr. Proctor, if you have anything to add?
Uh, I think that basically with the shelter is gonna be a necessity, especially with heat. Worst thing there is to anything electrical is heat, because the more resistance builds up and just creates more heat. So, uh, I'm with you, Brandon, I think we ought to settle them at about twenty thousand dollars.
This, uh, this is only put in about two years ago, I think, so it didn't last very long necessarily. We don't need to go into why this wasn't, um, identified as an issue when whoever put it in the first time put it in, but here we are, and, uh, and so, um, we need it and, um, we need to protect it, so.
Okay, Council. I would entertain a motion that we approve this expenditure up to twenty thousand dollars for the variable speed pump.
So many.
Have a motion. Second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Opposed, same. We'll dial the pump. Uh, item K, consideration of request for reduced water and sewer rates. Brandon, please, if you will.
Yes, sir, uh, Mr. Mayor and Council, and for the public, there is a process that enables, um, the city to, or applications from qualified individuals or households for a fifty percent reduction in their water and sewer rate, uh, if their household income does not exceed fifteen thousand and if their, um, age is sixty-two years old, uh, quarter. I believe both, uh, requests before you, uh, though we do not, um, reject just on the outset of the application, I do want to make sure you all see what we see. I do not believe that they are eligible, uh, based upon, uh, one age and perhaps income and the other, uh, I think also if the dual income household, it would exceed fifteen thousand, albeit, um, there is the philosophical need to address this matter that we identified back in January, that, uh, we've just not been able to prioritize and to address. If you want to, and I'll put Mr. Siphon on the spot, uh, if you want to at least ask if we would be setting an ill-advised precedent by foregoing the, um, requirements, you may recall the last one in January exceeded by a few hundred dollars. If you all want to, you know, say that in the future we anticipate that we're going to elevate the amount, um, beyond the fifteen, maybe threshold of twenty or twenty-five, depending on what factors we play, or fundamentally, if we wanted to, um, at least wanted you all to have what we've received.
You could also, Brandon, do some type of sliding scale depending on the amount of the income of the household as to how much of a discount to, to allow, um, that would take, um, a little research. Um, I, I do have concerns that just under the way the current ordinance is written, that, uh, possibly neither applicant needs the income, uh, that they're over the income level.
I agree.
Is this an item that we could table upon further eval from the appropriate committee?
You always have the power to table an issue and then bring it back up at the next meeting.
Kirk, I'm not sure that we could have, uh, have the information redone by that point, though.
And, and I'm saying, uh, if we table, do we have to give a definite date on that, Mr. Siphon?
Um, I think you have more leeway on this type of situation than you do, say, for a zoning matter, you, you know, the issue you sort of get into is they're gonna be using water and sewer during the time that all this is pending, um, and, you know, if you grant it, do you go retroactive back to the original date of application? Uh, uh, so, I, I still think y'all have the legal authority to table it, and if that's what you want to do, um, and it may not be a big deal, and, you know, we're just starting one month.
Well, you're thinking maybe sixty days would not be impose a burden on, on them because it's still, we're still extending to them the services, which it, it might be a monetary, uh, position for us sixty days from now, but, uh, but we could come up with the right thing to do.
Well, you know, I would have them pay at the regular rate and then you could always reimburse them if you end up deciding to, uh, grant their respective request for, for water and sewer rate discount.
Correct.
We could, uh, uh, send the, uh, issue to committee, uh,
Correct, which is what I would like.
And not approve this, or, uh, not approve the, uh, rate, uh, consideration, a reduced rate consideration and allow them to reapply under the, uh, any new, uh, uh, procedure that
Guidelines.
Guidelines, thank you.
Yeah, I, I, I agree with you, Jim, I think we need to ask them to reapply, I think we need to put this in, you know, deny it based on what the stipulations are now in our guidelines and then ask them to reapply as we redo it if we want to send it to committee and do that.
Uh, so I would entertain a motion to that effect, then?
Yes, I'd make that motion.
Certainly, to deny for now with the consideration that we will reconsider at a, at another appropriate time after it goes.
They, they need to reapply under the new guidelines.
Okay.
Yes.
In a second.
Second, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. And, uh, any further discussion by Council?
Uh, the one thing I would ask, uh, while this is a minor detail for our organization, um, to those that do apply for this, I want them to understand we are compassionate, we do understand that this is a necessity, and so I would ask that the administration and the city manager, uh, make sure that these, uh, that are included on this request are communicated clearly with.
Well, and something to the effect that in the time of COVID, we are, we are looking more closely at everything and
Yes.
and, and trying to be as compassionate as possible, so. Okay, so we have a motion and a second, any further discussion, Council? All in favor, please say aye. Opposed, same. And the motion is carried. Uh, committee reports, development report, Council members, Dr. Sunny Proctor and Kirk Raffield, if you would bring this to us, please.
Um, the development committee has not met since our last, uh, meeting, at least I don't believe we have. We do have before us a, a completed, um, zoning ordinance revised that, um, we will, we are in the process of reviewing, um, and, um, that's kind of where things stand.
It, it has been a pleasure working with the professionals in that field. As Dr. Proctor mentioned, we do have that, um, draft before for the final copy, and, uh, it's some good reading material.
Oh, yeah, all eighty-five pages of it, I agree totally.
Yes.
So thank you for that. And, uh, street, Street and Parks Committee, Council members Anne Snaby and John Faust, please.
Uh, excuse me, I, I would like to, we of course got the original, uh, older children park in, we would like to move forward and, and advise for the staff to get some quote and pricing on the smaller children's equipment.
Now, would that require a motion or just, uh, you're ready for action, all that?
I think we're just ready for him to, uh, get some pricing and then we would make a motion later as we get some, um, more concrete.
Okay, and John?
Yeah, Anne's correct, also too, we need to see about getting fencing too, or once it's done. Uh, yeah, we need to get prices and when we have our budget meeting, then we'll be able to put it in the budget, so be able to get it going.
Okay, so you're asking the city manager then to, to proceed forward with, uh, with let's do what we have already approved, but, uh, but we need to get our, get our ducks in order as far as getting the money together and, and the appropriate quotes, so.
That's correct, yeah.
Okay. And, uh, and now in here also, if I might ask one question, uh, we had, we had spoken at some point about, uh, about our, our Peace Park, that we're gonna have, uh, an outside firm take a look at that.
Correct.
Go ahead, Anne.
Well, that's what we were just fixing to say, uh, that was the other thing we would like to, you know, see if staff would move forward in, in getting some information for us, for the council to, uh, for, after the committee for the council to approve and look at, um, some ideas and pricing for Peace Park as well.
Yeah, I think Brandon had brought up Clark Patterson and Lee doing some concept designs for us to show each other and talk about it at the budget meeting.
Not that I get excited about these type of things, but I do, so, it's just such to think about the progress that we can do in that area, so. So anything further from the, uh, Street and Parks Committee?
No, not at this time.
And Mr. Mayor and, uh, Council, just to clarify, to make sure, what we'll present to you all at our September fourteenth meeting is consideration, um, some quotes on the, the kids' equipment, I think probably six months, uh, five years or whatever the age, along with some fencing, so that a motion approval can be done and potential, uh, implementation thereafter. Parts to the integration of one twenty-five North Main, North America, and, uh, full jail cabin, green space, and, um, Peace Park, that particular proposal, Mark Patterson and Lee, you all just want us to kind of scrub that, revise those numbers for that firm, and hopefully in two to three weeks, when we have a preliminary workshop, have some, uh, financial numbers to share with y'all, correct?
That's correct.
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Admin Committee, Council members Jim Looney and Anne Snaby?
Council, thank you for your positive vote on the job application, work is still being done to complete, uh, job descriptions, as I mentioned, um, and, uh, we are real close to having a salary wage scale, uh, completed, uh, there's, uh, some more work that will be done on that. Um, also in your packages, you've got, uh, the financial reports for July, uh, general fund, water fund, uh, checks written over five thousand dollars, um, and, uh, there is a note, uh, on the financial reports that, uh, was a major purchase this month for the bulletproof vests for the police department that, uh, you have, um, have, have already approved. Anne, have you got anything else you want to add from administration?
Uh, I think that's all at this point.
Okay. Water, wastewater committee, uh, Council members John Faust and, uh, Dr. Sunny Proctor?
Um, not, not a whole lot to add, um, add, we, we just continue to work with, um, our neighbors and our partners to try to, uh, come up with solutions for any challenges we might, um, come across. We are in the process of, uh, formalizing some of our agreements, uh, our, uh, relationships and, um, just, um, I had a good conversation with David today, um, and, um, he identified a couple of things I'll be following up on, but, um, and I'll share those with John, um, in the next day or so, but just keep fighting the battle.
Yeah, and just to recognize our crews, because they did finally finish the Myrtle Street, all I've heard is good compliments and think they like the new water pressure, they also completed the Grandview, so they've been busy, I mean, they've been very busy, I'm proud of all of them.
Awesome, thank you, John.
Thank you, John. Thank you, Sunny. Uh, Police and Fire Committee, uh, Council members Kirk Raffield and Jim Littler.
Uh, we mentioned earlier Major Gleason retiring, congratulations to him. Uh, have, uh, communicated with, uh, Chief Lovell and Chief Roper, uh, nothing outstanding, uh, other than normal business, uh, going on and, uh, thank them for that. Kirk, you got anything you want to add to that?
Uh, honestly, I, I spoke to Major Gleason after his going away party, and just as a, a personal thank you to Major Gleason, uh, we appreciate your dedication, your loyalty to our police department, you were leaving us, uh, better than you found us, and we certainly appreciate that. Hope that you enjoy all the traveling after retirement. As far as the PD and the fire, uh, Jim, you are correct, I've talked to both chiefs, they're in good shape, they're keeping the city safe, and we thank them for everything they do.
Thank you, thank you both. Brandon? Will our city manager bring to us a financial report?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, Council, and, uh, I want to preface this with, uh, because Lindsay's gonna tell you some bad news, I'm gonna let her talk and not me, uh, but no, in all sincerity, you'll see in the memo, um, there, there are some revenue expenditures whereupon, uh, we have, and some of the use of fund balance, uh, so just to give you an accurate depiction of where we stand, I do want Lindsay to specifically, uh, just kind of itemize some things from the memo, uh, all the while knowing that twenty-twenty budget amendments, uh, will be plugged in and ultimately, as we end the year, it's our intention to use as little as fund balance as possible, all the while, so with that, Lindsay, take it away.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Thank you, Brandon. Um, so if you look at your packet, the, um, expenditures were over revenue, a hundred forty-four thousand, six hundred and sixty-five dollars and some change. Um, you can see the comparison between the revenues and expenditures for the year. Uh, the loss receipts, we were doing, we're still holding steady on those at a hundred thirty-one thousand, seven hundred and ninety-nine The loss receipts, we were doing, we're still holding steady on those at 131,790 dollars and 97 cents. The T V T was 7,698 dollars and 82 cents, compared to last year was 30,196.08, which I think after this month, you'll kind of see they're about similar, which we should start seeing a little bit of an increase in that. The building department, their total department, they collected 10,468 dollars and 70 cents. For the water and sewer fund, revenue was over expenditures, 351,253 dollars and 68 cents, when you have your yearly comparison. Water receipts, we collected 225,033 dollars and 23 cents. Sewer receipts was 51,474 dollars and 66 cents. And we collected 88,060 dollars and 13 cents in our leach aid. We didn't have any cost of construction and as Jim Looney pointed out earlier, we did purchase the bulletproof vest this month, so. That's it.
Thank you, Lindsay.
You're welcome.
Didn't see Lonnie on here, Brandon, are you going to give the development report for Lonnie?
I will just have him email you all some data, just for
And the same thing on the police report?
It is in your packets, yes, sir.
And the same thing on the fire report? I flipped over to the last page of this and guess what it says? Adjourn. So since a motion to adjourn is always in order, could I get a motion to adjourn for the evening, please, at 7:33? Done well.
Make a motion, we adjourn.
And do we have a second to that wonderful motion?
Second.
Thank everybody for a good job, well done.
Thanks, everybody. Green, thanks for coming.
Green, thank you.
Thanks, y'all. Every one of you.
Thank you. Thank you all.